Good morning, if the commissioners will take their place, we'll begin the meeting.
Harold Steele-Polite.
Where'd he go?
Harold was joking.
Is he out there in the hall?
I reckon he was up, he was that way.
Tell him we're starting to meet.
Yeah. Tell him he's holding it up.
Kevin?
Yeah, I cried, I watched the ballgame at midnight, cried from twelve to one, and now I'm fine tomorrow.
I just got up and went to bed. On that last interstate, that last run, I just got up and went on to bed. Morning, Harold.
He had an old company in late.
You're a minute and a half late, you gonna be done?
I don't want to hear no comments about a certain person then.
About what then?
A certain person.
Being late.
I ain't made no comment, I didn't know I was late. Y'all have got him early.
At this time, we'll call the meeting to order. There is a quorum present, I would like for us to stand and join us in the invocation. Commissioner Terman, when you do that, then we'll have the pledge of allegiance.
My sir. My gracious heavenly father, we're thankful for this day and the blessings, Lord, that you bestowed upon us, thank you, Lord, for keeping us. Thank you for directing our paths, and we ask you to just continue to do so, direct our minds and hearts, may it be within your will. I pray now that you would continue to bless, continue to touch the county, and help us, Lord, continue to prosper in you. And I pray, God, that you just bless our nation, touch it, we need you to help us there, Lord, and we know it, we understand that. And we just pray for you to just give us guidance and help, in Jesus' name we do pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to welcome everybody here today, we thank you for your interest in the county government. We appreciate the news media being here to get the word out as about the county. At this time, I would like for us to consider additional agenda items to be added to the official agenda. Do I have a motion to add these three items to the official agenda?
May I ask what item is on the agenda? Be added?
We need to ratify the purchase of sheriff's three Tahoes, and, and membership in the National Association of Counties.
I make a motion, we would add these three.
A second.
All in favor say aye. Now I need a motion to adopt the official agenda with these items.
I saw them with.
Second.
All in favor say aye. Motion carried. This time we'll have comments from our public officials, I see distinguished probate judges here. Judge Bowden, would you care to make any comments at this time?
No, thank you.
Thank you. We have some other agency heads here, we have Ms. Lisa Sala here, Department of Human Resources. And we also have the superintendents of our three local school system. And this time, I'm going to ask them if they would like to make a, either one or all three of you to make comments, and I'd like for you to come to the podium, please.
How about you got nominated?
Big man first.
First of all, thank you all for having us here. I want to come in and just say that the fact that I was not sitting by Michael has nothing to do with our relationship, but my whiteness. And so, uh, it's a lot more comfortable for us, no. I had a meeting with our teachers this past Monday when we came back from in-service, and I made a comment, I asked, at the elementary school, how many, what they were doing, how many remember what they were doing in nineteen eighty-five? And I asked specifically a couple of teachers that, and they said, well, they hadn't even been born yet. And so, I asked them to raise their hands, and it's amazing how many teachers that we have that weren't even born in nineteen eighty-five, yet a lot was going on with regard to the school systems in Covington County. Without going into a big, deep history lesson, basically what was taking place was a referendum was taking place to adds, basically seven, excuse me, six meals, to, back then it was seven meals, of the referendum to the school systems. And it had to be voted on by the people, and at that time in nineteen eighty-five, it passed. Now, the thing that was made, it was so much fun, I know you all know this, was that there was a sunset of thirty years on that. And so, guess what? The three superintendents, we sit here, you have the dubious task, the honor of coming before you all with that tax by the sunset. And so, we have to bring it to the people again, to vote on it, and it's a renewal. And part of that process is to get you all to have a special election for us to be able to bring it before the people of Covington County. It's something that I think we all agree on would be, is vital to the success of our school systems. They can address this if they want to. Each school system throughout the state of Alabama has to provide ten meals equivalent to the, towards the running of their school, before any state monies come down, this is what we use, this is the money that we use that for. And so, it's been taking place since, this is nineteen seventy, with the seven meals, six meals, it's been seventy-five, and Michael Shannon-Tammy wanted the one meal come out was nineteen... Nineteen oh one. So, it's, it's been on the books well over seventy years or so, and, and, boy, I tell you, we would've been in a bind if we didn't have it now. So, but we have to bring it to the people, and we appreciate you all, your consideration as far as an election, to bring it to the people, to ask for continued, continued flow of that money coming in, and like I said, it's a renewal, it's not a new tax, but a renewal, and we want to emphasize that, and just ask for your help on that endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith-Hart from Op System, would you care to respond? Well, you know, we got everything on camera, and we streaming live, and we, we want the people to know that the school systems are requesting this.
Absolutely. I, I do think, I do think it's important to note, you know, as, as we go through this from, from a countywide perspective, that we spend a great deal of time and a great deal of resources competing with each other. You know, op versus Andalusia, op versus the county schools, and, and great rivalries, that, that's all wonderful, and there's a time and place for all of that. You know, now, I think, just from the perspective of the school districts, it, it's time for everyone to come together. And that's why we're here, the three of us, to, to make sure that everyone in this county understands that this tax renewal, and I think that's an important part of it. This tax renewal is important for all three school districts and every child that attends every school in this district. And so, you know, this, it's not a time for any, you know, rivalries or anything like that, it is time for everyone in Covington County to come together and, and vote to renew a tax that's been on the books for over seventy years. This, you know, and, and I think our selling point and, and the thing that we will try to stress is the fact that it's not new, it's not an increase, it's simply to, to maintain the status quo of where we are. And we've taken the steps on our end, you know, as, as school districts, to, to come to you with, with the proper paperwork and the procedures that we followed, and we will ask you to pass that, adopt that resolution, and then we can move forward, and we'll do our end as far as publicity and that sort of thing, and we just appreciate all that you all do for our school districts, and on behalf of the Op City School District, we do appreciate the county commission and all that you do for us and have done for us, and I look forward to working with you on this.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You ain't getting left out.
I'd just like to echo what they've said, we, we do appreciate the commission, considering this, this money is a big part of the operational money for our school system, it is required by state that we do contribute ten meals to the foundation program. And so, this, this comprises a bulk of, of our funding for our local schools. And we do appreciate you considering this. As Mr. Smith-Hart said, this is a time for all of us to come together, as three school systems and citizens of the county to renew this, and we, we hope to do this. I believe you have the documentation there for, for March the tenth, we're, we're looking forward to that date. Hopefully, the citizens of the county realize the importance of this, and will come through and approve this, and we thank you all for what you do and for your support in this matter, and we're confident that, that this will pass, and we'll continue to operate as we have for the last seventy years, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will address the actions that we need to take later on in, in the meeting. If you three gentlemen feel like you have some other appointments you need to go to, don't, feel free to leave, because our attorney will be... They will, our attorney will be advising us on the actions that we need to take. Yes.
You're welcome.
That could lead right into the jail. Uh, we have one item of all business, and that's consider an appointment to the Department of Human Resources Board, and I believe we have Ms. Lisa Sala here, who is director. I'll ask her to address the group.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm glad that we're not quite so newsworthy, where the cameras leaving out, that's good. Um, I want to first thank y'all for your role and your support in appointing us our board for our county office. This board is essential to our operations and ensuring the quality of the services that we provide. We meet quarterly, and I report to them about our various programs and their areas that we need to improve, and those things that we are doing well. I believe that you have two applicants for this position, and I think they're both quality applicants, and would do a great job, but I did want to to remind you that we try very hard to have representatives from each area of the county, each of your districts. And this vacancy came from Mr. Elmore's district, so, just in your consideration, that's a goal that we have, that each part of the county is represented on our board, because we do serve the entire county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The two applicants are Face Sotler and Bertie Mae Smith. Open up for discussion or a motion.
You, you did say that, Ms. Sotler, we need one from this area where she lives at, is that correct? So, Ms. Smith sort of have, you'll have somebody representing that area where she lives at? Okay.
I make a motion that we accept Ms. Sotler's application for the human resource.
I'll second, chairman.
We have a motion and a second to appoint Ms. Face Sotler to the board. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed, nay, there be a non-motion carried unanimously. The next item, we'll go into new business, because the two items that we added to the agenda are new items, and we'll take those up after we get down past number two under new business. First thing under new business, we need to consider the approval of the minutes for the December tenth, two thousand fourteen regular meeting. Do I have a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes, chairman.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes for December the second, two thousand fourteen. Is there any comments at this time? All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, nay, there be a non-motion carried unanimously. The other, item two is consider board appointments. One is to the Southeast Alabama Rural Planning Organization Policy Committee. We have, the current person serving is Commissioner Cole Terman, and he is requesting that he be reappointed. What's the pleasure of the board?
I'm making a motion to reappoint Commissioner Terman.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, all in favor say aye. All opposed, nay, motion carried. Welcome to continue your job, Mr. Terman.
Thank you. I'll try.
The next one is an informant to the Southeast Alabama Regional Planning and Development Commission. Currently, Mr. Kenneth Mount, a member of the city council, and this has to be an elected official for this, and he has asked for reappointment. What's the pleasure of the board?
I make a motion to accept Mr. Mount's application for reappointment.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to reappoint Mr. Mount to this board, all in favor say aye. All opposed, nay, there be a non-motion carried unanimously. At this time, we'll take up the ratification of purchase of sheriff's vehicle. As you know, in the budget, we provided to purchase three new cars. He has requested that we ratified that. We do have to have a motion to purch, make those purchases, is that not correct, Ms. Sala? So, uh, at this time, I would entertain a motion that we purchase those three vehicles for the sheriff's department.
I'll make a motion for those three vehicles for the sheriff's department.
I'll second.
As a comment to this, the budgeted amount was eighty-five thousand, is that not correct, Ms. Sala?
Eighty-five five.
Eighty-five five, the total cost is eighty-seven...
One forty-six or something.
And the sheriff has agreed to provide the additional funding over the budgeted amount for the purchases.
That's good.
All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, nay, motion carried unanimously. Next item is to consider our membership in the National Association of Counties. And that is in the amount of seven hundred dollars for us to loan to the National Association. What's the pleasure of the board? We have, we have been a member, I don't know the extent of the number year, but I understand that we've always been a member.
Yeah, I mean, I don't see any reason not to, I think we should do it, and continue on. I make a motion that we can continue to do this.
Do I have a second to be...
Second.
We have a motion and a second that we continue our membership in the National Association of Counties, all in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, nay, there be a non-motion carried unanimously. Our next item is consider a resolution for the March tenth, two thousand fifteen special school tax election. At this time, I'm going to call on our attorney to walk us through this.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, there are five in your packet, there are five items for you to consider related to the special election for the millage renewal. And in general, the resolutions include your authorization for the election itself, the form of the election notice, and the form of ballot. But specifically, the first resolution pertains to the Andalusia City Board's request that the commission call the renewal election for school district number forty, which is Andalusia City. The second pertains to the Op City Board's request that the commission call renewal election with respect to school district number thirty-three, which is Op City. The third pertains to the county school system, which comprises three separate tax districts, and that's covered in that way in that resolution. The fourth pertains to the petition that was signed by more than two hundred qualified electors that the commission called a renewal on the continuation of the one mill in the county. And the last resolution pertains to the petition regarding the three-mill county by tax. Now, what I recommend that you do, and what you're allowed to do, is approve this as a single package agenda item. In other words, you would consider all five of these as one package, so... If, if you agree with that, then what somebody would need to do is just say, I so move, and then you have a second to vote on it.
Do I have a motion for us to call the special election with these five resolutions?
I make a motion, we have a special election on these five.
Okay, you have, what your motion needs to be is that you're going to consider all five of these resolutions as a single package agenda item.
Okay.
Is that what you want to do?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second.
A question for you.
Okay.
Can we ask the probate judge to conduct this election on our behalf?
Well, that's going to be covered, I was going to cover that with you second. You, you can't delegate what the code requires you to do, however, the probate judge certainly as the, you know, official charged with that duty in general elections is more than happy, wants to direct the commission in a way that this needs to be done. He and I talked about it, but I'd like to take that up as a separate issue, sec, separate from passing these five resolutions.
We have a motion and a second to consider these five items as a single packet. All in favor say aye. All opposed, nay, there be a non-motion carried unanimously.
Okay, now separately, Mr. Chairman, as you recognize, I don't think any of you have conducted a general election, I know I haven't. And so, in order to make sure that the proper procedures are followed and it goes smoothly, and with the probate judge being the chief election officer for the county, what I recommend that you do is to authorize him to direct the commission, as well as the other county and state officers, because the sheriff does have some responsibilities here too, and other officers charged with the duties in this election, to direct them in the manner in which you and they are to accomplish the duties assigned under the code of Alabama. So, if that's what you want to do, somebody would just need to, to so move and prove it.
I make that motion.
Second.
We have the motion and a second to authorize him.
Right, Judge Bowden.
All in favor say aye. All opposed, nay, there be a non-motion carried unanimously.
Just so that, that y'all understand this, the way that that would have to work is that y'all would have to officially approve the things that, that Judge Bowden would direct you to do, so it's going to have to be a commission or a sheriff, depending on what the code says, action, however, Judge Bowden will tell you how to, how to do it. You got any comments?
That sounds good.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anything else? No, sir, not for me.
Okay, at this time, we'll hear from the board, if any comments they would like to make at this time.
I'd like to say, Mr. Chairman, we've got a new administrator in our first meeting in a new year.
That was one of the things I, I failed to do up front, to recognize the person that's going to keep us straight.
Appreciate her, and look forward to working with her.
Thank you, and I look forward to working with all y'all, so.
I'd like to say the same, echo what Commissioner Terman said, looking forward to working with her. I know it's just going to be stressful sometimes on you, but you can handle it. The commissioners here will try to help you any way we can, just call on them.
Thank you.
And I'm sure everybody else will, is the same. Ms. Sala, thank you, that's all I have, chairman.
Well, welcome, you'll be in the spot, you'll be a little more in the spotlight than you have been. But I'm sure you worked through it in, over the past few weeks, so, I know you gained a lot of information inside on the county's business, and I think you do really well, and I know that all of your staff, and will be more within it.
I was thinking, I don't know, it just, a thought kind of tell me that we've had a lot of people that's been with our county for a long time, is retiring out during our term. And I look forward to you, you know, doing your job. Hate to lose people, you know, like, you know, Bob Harper, people that's been with us for years, that just was there. And we got new people coming in, it's exciting, and wanting to do the job, you know, and that, that's good. I think everything's going to go, continue well, and I wish you all the best.
Thank you.
Chairman, I'd like to say one more thing.
Yes.
If you, if I'm allowed to, please. Ms. Knoll, the commission just mentioned something about Ms. Patty, she's, you know, thirty-something years, they was two families, two generations, worked with the county, retires. Uh, one about three years ago, one's about ten, twelve years ago, worked ninety-something years with the county, two generations. You know, that, that is an achievement that probably never be broken. You know, but it was, two generations do that, and they worked for the same district. That's great.
Were you there the whole nine years?
Sure.
Were you there the whole nine years?
I was, I was there somewhere.
I, I echo the sentiments of my fellow commissioners in welcoming Ms. Sala to the, this new position, because she's no stranger to county government, because she came over from the probate judge's office, and, and I know Judge Bowden hated to lose such a good person, but I think he sees the need for the betterment of the county as a whole, and we appreciate you training her adamantly. And so, we looking forward to move forward on this, and as we take up different things. At this time, I'm going to call on our county engineer to comment on Steel Pond Road and what the progress and what our status is there.
Yeah, Steel Pond Road is a resurfacing job that we started right before Christmas, and then we had some cold, rainy weather, so it was delayed until the first of the year. And it, they should be hopefully finished today for the bulk of the project. And we still have to do the shoulders, what we're doing, the striping, and... But, but most of it's completed, as of today, should be.
You, you have any indication of how much more, I know the state funded three hundred thousand dollars.
Three hundred fifty.
Fifty thousand.
Three hundred fifty. Uh, and we are providing in-kind services.
Right.
For part of it, do you, do you have any idea how much more actual money that we would have to have?
It's probably going to be close to sixty thousand, but I don't know, I didn't look at the final quantities yet, but it's not going to be too much more than fifty or sixty thousand.
And that's one of the items we did not budget for, because that came up all of a sudden, so we'll have to address that, probably in the budget from amendment for that. Am I not correct, do they have rerouted some of the traffic another way down?
Yeah, they, I talked to the Florida County, and they didn't have any problem detouring some of that on, instead of taking a left on Steel Pond, taking a right on County Road Four, and then Race Drag Road, immediately left. And that runs into the Florida State Road, eighty-five.
Eighty-five.
Yeah. And the state put some signs up, and that has, I went down yesterday, and it has helped some, some of the traffic flow, especially going to Florida. It creates a few, or hit, or going that way, which has helped us a little bit on the traffic on Steel Pond.
Didn't they do some striping yesterday down there, they wind up getting a little striping down yesterday?
We did the striping after they pulled out yesterday.
Yesterday.
Well, that, that's good, because...
Lot better shape than it was.
Oh, yeah.
Sure is.
We had a lot...
No bad accidents.
We had a lot of controversy down there to start with, after that traffic rerouted, but, you know, we was able to work together and work with the state to solve the problem, and I think that's what it's all about, is collaborative effort between the county and the state to solve these issues. And as always, the cost is probably the biggest thing, that is, he was going to bear that cost, but it's a shared burden, and we'll have a road for the next fifty years, I believe, it'd be better, that the next commission, whoever it is, will not have to address for a long time, and we appreciate that. Any of our, uh, Mr. Kevin, you have anything? Would you comment a little bit about Point A Park, what you have done to alleviate part of the problem up there with the...
At Point A Park, after we met with Mr. Tom Watson, he was, had some issues with the sewage system. Since I've been with the county a little over eleven years now, we've had issues with that sewage system. And as we leased it to the third party, he's had issues also, and me and Mr. Gawain talked briefly, and I felt it, that we could do some in-kind services. The way we looked at it, the projected cost of that was about to, the burden of that was about to be, be ours, the way that the, um, the lease is written up. So, I offered some in-kind services. Mr. Capps loaned me a bat hole, and me and my team went up there, and what we really did was look for a valve that the plans said are there, and we didn't ever find. But we did make sure that probably, we checked probably a third of it, and we know that that third of it is in good repair, is working properly. There's, I'm going to guess and say there's almost three-quarters of a mile of a four-inch sewage line that goes from there, may know closer, but that goes from Point A Park from a pump, a grinding pump, sewage pump, all the way to a septic system that's close to the campground. It goes up that drive, down the main road, and back down another drive to the septic system. And we have, we have a problem with the pump not doing what it's supposed to do. The, but the pump is working properly, there's something, we believe there's something... There's something, we believe there's something in that line, an obstruction in that line, that's creating the problem for the pump. The pump runs way too long, it's not pushing the volume of water it should through this big pipe. Um, so we're trying to, looking at the plans, trying to find the check valves, trying to make sure that we can, uh, clear the obstruction. And we started this process right before the holidays. And, um, with it, with the people being out and the buildings being closed and work being a little short, uh, the past couple of weeks, um, I talked to Mr. Watson, we're going to collaborate those efforts again and try to see what we can do. And, um, br- that's it briefly, we, uh, we hope, uh, that the, the main line that goes along the roadway was installed, if, if I understand it correctly, before that road was paved. And the road was paved in the seventies, I believe. And the, the sewage system was put in before the road was paved and I'm afraid that there is a section of that that's under pavement. And I just hope that as we do our investigation of what's wrong, that we don't find out there's a problem under that road, which would mean we would probably need to reroute that pipe, either back beside the road, the existing road, uh, and replace some of it, which will be costly, but we haven't determined the exact problem yet, but we are working on that. I hope to get that cleared up well before the, the season of, that the bathrooms are in so much use, which will be probably April, May before it, uh, maybe even June before their, you know, the uses will pick up dramatically. And that pump will be working a lot. We hope to do that in the next month or so to, to clear up those problems, find them and address them.
All of this is predicated on the lease. After ten thou- Mr. Watson spends ten thousand dollars on repair, then it's, then it's out.
Then it's out.
And I have talked to our attorney about it and we'll be discussing further about how to address it. Just wanted to make everybody aware that we, we are trying to address problems in different areas of the county and so with that. Uh, is any, uh, Ms. La- uh, Sala, pardon me, but, uh, you've always been Ms. Sala, something for a long time. But do you have any comments, uh, about anything?
No, I do not have anything.
Okay. Uh, EMA? Uh, are you predicting ice?
Our forecast is predicting cold weather.
Uh, I, if I remember right, it's about this time last year that we had the ice storm.
It's the end of January.
Uh, we, we do not want another one of those.
I don't want cold weather, but I'm willing to take it.
Any other comment, Mr. Holmbruck?
That's rough, spoken enough.
Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll ISO move, Chairman.
Second.
We got him, Chanelle second to adjourn, all in favor, stand.
Stand. John.